It's five o'clock, so we're gonna call and order our September meeting of your Board of Education. And the first item up is the Pledge of Allegiance, and Mr. Butch Oliver's going to read this in that.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you. Our mission statement will be read tonight by Mike Isbell.
The mission of the Beaufort County Schools team is to enhance the quality of life in our community by nurturing all students and educating them to their fullest potential.
Okay, thanks, Mike. I understand we have no one signed up for public comments, so we'll move to approval of the agenda. Is there anything that needs to be added? Anybody deleted?
Move approval.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In your pose. Okay, we have the agenda, and that carries us to approval of the minutes from past board meetings. And you'll click on your screen, you'll see that's September 14th, and hopefully you've had time to look over those.
(Inaudible)
The only correction I see is the meeting was actually held at Northside, not here.
Okay.
Don't that matter?
Yeah, can. Yeah, sure, you'll take care of that. Okay. Did I hear a motion to my left in a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve with that change. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In your pose. Okay, the minutes are approved, and that'll take us into public recognition. And tonight, I believe Carolyn Walker's going to assist Ms. Howard over here to do our recognition.
Good evening.
The character trait that was recognized in our schools for the month of September were character traits where respect and responsibility. At the elementary level, the nominees were from Chaco Winnity Middle, Daniel Gomez, from Chaco Winnity Primary, Megan Grimsley, from Eastern Elementary, Nicholas Martinez, from John Cotton Taylor, Kenyaz McLeod, from John Small, Daniela Luque, and from Northeast Elementary, Nicholas Moore. And the winner at the elementary level was Nicholas Martinez, if you will come forward.
(Applause)
There he is.
Stand right here.
Nicholas is a kindergarten at Eastern Elementary, and his parents are Noel Martinez and Adriana Martinez, if you will stand. He was nominated by his teacher, Ms. Cherie Boyd, if she will stand. And Ms. Boyd wrote, "Respect and responsibility often go hand in hand and help establish a strong foundation of solid values in children. Children primarily learn about responsibility from the examples set by their parents, but they also learn responsibility by taking responsibility. Nicholas demonstrates respectful and responsible behavior when he cleans up after himself each morning. He is kind to classmates. On the second day of school, he helped a friend find their bus when they were lost and upset. Nicholas also recognizes when teachers need a helping hand. He will put materials in order and will open doors for teachers who are carrying a heavy load. Nicholas displays kindness, respect for others, and property, and generosity to others. He is the warm sunny part of my day." We say congratulations to Nicholas Martinez.
(Applause)
Nicholas, what I'd like for you to do is greet all the board members today. Congratulations. Should be okay.
So scared it came down.
We must accuse.
Scared it, yeah.
Congratulations, keep up the good work.
(Laughter)
(Inaudible)
Good job, young man.
(Inaudible)
Come here, let me see this.
(Laughter)
Nicholas, this is also one time that you've been in trouble for writing on school practice, so it would be like, it would be like for you. Can you sign your name? Gretchen. Anywhere you want. (Inaudible) But you're doing a great job. Better question. (Inaudible) All right, come right over here, sweetie. And you can pick any book on this, I think the top shelf is the top shelf, whichever one you want. (Inaudible) Okay, you can have a seat, we'll bring you back up for pictures. Oh, the guy should take it for himself. We'll bring you back up for a big picture.
At the middle school level, the nominees were from Chaco Winnity Middle, Jairo Juarez, from Northeast Elementary, Justin Bell, from P.S. Jones Middle School, William Reed, and the winner at the middle school level was Justin Bell. And Justin had some athletic obligations that kept him from being here, so we're going to present his award at another time, but I would like to read what was written for Justin. Justin is an eighth grader at Northeast Elementary. His parents are Gregory and Jody Bell, and he was presented by the eighth grade teachers, and it said, "We would like to nominate Justin Bell for the character education trait of respect and responsibility for his unwavering dedication to the N.E.S. American flag. Prior to language arts class, he informed his teachers that he may need to step out to take care of the flag if the weather turned inclement. His concern was very sincere. Sure enough, the weather worsened a bit. He was called to remove the flag. He literally ran out of our class like a bolt of lightning. He then proceeded to work very efficiently at removing the flag, thus protecting it from the elements. What a patriotic young man. Way to go, Justin," from the eighth grade teachers. We say congratulations to Justin. (Applause) At the high school level, the nominees were from the early college high schools, Stepon Moore, from Northside High School, Meredith Boyd, from Washington High School, Taiwan Godley, and from Southside High School, Michael Gallin. And the winner at the high school level was Meredith Boyd, if she will come forward. (Applause) Meredith is an 11th grader at Northside High School. Her parents are Amanda and Todd Boyd, if they will stand, and she was presented by Ms. Amanda Watkins, if she will stand. And Ms. Watkins wrote, "Meredith Boyd has been my student for three years now. She began her FFA journey after a lifetime of being surrounded by agriculture on her family's farm. Three years ago, Meredith started her high school career as a Green Hand or first-year FFA member. Since then, she has grown into a tremendous leader in her school and community. She currently serves as the Northside FFA Chapter Vice President and a Northeast Regional FFA Vice President. Meredith embodies fully what it means to be responsible, respectful, kind, and courteous. With specific regard to her traits of responsibility and respect, I would like to tell a few stories about Meredith. As I mentioned, Meredith began her FFA career as soon as she transitioned from Bath to Northside. She was eager to participate in FFA events and continue the tradition of FFA membership of her family members. At the time, her cousin was serving as chapter co-president. That year, Meredith was more than just a freshman. Meredith competed in a multitude of contests in our FFA chapter, including agriculture sales. In the meantime, she played volleyball for the Northside Lady Panthers, maintained an impressive GPA, and helped her family at home. That year, Meredith achieved great success in FFA and in school, and she attributes so much of that success to her time management skills, a key component in being a responsible young adult. This year, Meredith's responsibilities grew even more. She is now a varsity volleyball player and serves in multiple leadership roles throughout the school. She has enrolled in various college courses and still maintains a pristine grade point average. When faced with an ever-expanding to-do list, one would think that a student would falter, but Meredith's diligence in completing her obligations has only strengthened. The final capstone component of Meredith's responsibility is a little different. Beyond responsibility for herself, her schoolwork, her car, and her family, Meredith feels responsible for the well-being of her community. This past summer, Meredith attended Washington Leadership Conference, a week-long conference designed for FFA members in the pinnacle of their FFA careers. While there, Meredith dreamed up a way that she could make an incredible impact on our community. As an agriculturist, Meredith understands the responsibility of American farmers to produce food, clothing, and fuel for the masses. Though she doesn't intend to be a farmer, she still feels the same responsibility to her community that her grandfather, father, and uncle feel. Meredith spun this feeling of deep responsibility into plans to raise funds to package 60,000 meals this spring, which in turn will be donated to Eagles Wings Food Bank and local food pantries. Meredith is planning this incredible service project, not as a grade, nor for any FFA awards or recognition, but because she sees an opportunity to help her own community succeed through her privileges. If one spends time around Meredith, it is easy to see that she truly is a model of respect, poise, and sincerity. As a teacher, I have been blessed by her diligence in being a self-motivated student. As an FFA advisor, I am honored to have a student that truly understands and feels a connection to our FFA mission, premier leadership, personal growth, and career success. Meredith is truly one of the most responsible and respectful young ladies I have ever worked with, and she is truly deserving of this honor. We say congratulations to Meredith.
(Applause)
Congratulations. (Inaudible) Let's get both of you to back up. (Inaudible) At this point, we'd like to go through our September 2015 Clean School Award, and this year, this month's winner is from Bath Elementary School with a perfect 100% score. We'd like to invite custodians Wade McKeel, Tyrone Langley, and Eva Lodge to come up, if you would, to accept the award. (Applause) I can greet the board, if you would, and then we'd like to get a picture of the congratulations.
(Inaudible)
Let's get both of you to back up. (Inaudible) At this point, we'd like to go through our September 2015 Clean School Award, and this year, this month's winner is from Bath Elementary School with a perfect 100% score. We'd like to invite custodians Wade McKeel, Tyrone Langley, and Eva Lodge to come up, if you would, to accept the award. (Applause) I can greet the board, if you would, and then we'd like to get a picture of the congratulations. (Inaudible) Let's give both of you to back up. (Inaudible) At this point, we'd like to go through our September 2015 Clean School Award, and this year, this month's winner is from Bath Elementary School with a perfect 100% score. We'd like to invite custodians Wade McKeel, Tyrone Langley, and Eva Lodge to come up, if you would, to accept the award. (Applause) I can greet the board, if you would, and then we'd like to get a picture of the congratulations.
(Inaudible)
We appreciate our work, and it's a nice job.
(Inaudible)
Congratulations.
(Inaudible)
Let have Mr. Brian Swain, the principal, and Candace Strickland, assistant principal, to join us for picture.
(Inaudible)
We also like to recognize those schools that scored 95% or higher as honorable mention schools. And at 99%, we had P.S. Jones Middle School. At 98%, Southside High School, Chaco Winnity Middle, and S.W. Snowden Elementary. At 97%, Northside High School, John Cotton Taylor Elementary, and the Ed Tech Center. At 96%, John Small, Northeast, Chaco Winnity Primary, and Eastern Elementary, and Washington High School at 95%. This is the first time that I know of that all of our schools are recognized, honorable mention, and winner, so let's give them a round of applause. (Applause) We also, this is a point of recognition, we'd like to recognize one of the folks we've got in our audience, Mr. Charles Clark, is the Principal of the Year for Beaufort County from Northside High School. Mr. Clark, we're proud of you and wanna wish you well in your competition. And Ms. Melissa Boyd, who's a teacher at Bath Elementary, is the Teacher of the Year, and she'll be going through the process, hopefully to be our representative for the Northeast Region and then in the state competition. So let's give both of them a round of applause. (Applause)
You all at least have to stand up.
I will, when I...
Which is what, about right now? And the reason I say that, we're through with our recognition portion, and we're getting ready to move into the business of the meeting, which you're welcome to stay, but we generally give about a one-minute break in case you came for the recognition part. And this is generally where we clear the room out with the board. But we understand why you came, so if you would like to leave, now's a good time. If you'd like to stay, that's great, too. But they'll leave.
Hey, wait, we'll keep that thing at Bath now.
(Inaudible)
I appreciate it, let's keep it down there. Good job.
Thank you.
100% is good. I like that, you can't beat that.
Yeah.
Well, I want it, I like it.
No offense, Catherine. We're gonna keep two.
Oh, okay, okay. You now know how it feels. But that's okay. We'll let them get down the hall a little bit, I think the noise is about died down.
Okay, so now we'll move into the business part of our meeting, and first would be the no-action items, and I do believe Ms. Glover's gonna give us an update on Bright Futures. And there's a pass out, everybody should have a quick one.
(Inaudible)
Oh, I'm sorry.
(Inaudible) I'm Catherine Glover, and I'm with the chamber. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. And we just wanted to update you about Bright Futures. I was here, I don't even know how many months ago, but several months ago, and we had gotten this program up and started, and it's a partnership between the Chamber of Commerce, Beaufort County Schools, and with the funding of Potash Corporation. And so we're in, getting ready to hit our first full year of having this program, and a lot has happened throughout the year, and we're very pleased with what's been going on. As the schools stopped for, we're having a party out there.
Yeah.
Having a good time celebrating with those awards. As schools started and the students left, we were looking back through the meetings that we've actually had with Bright Futures, and we've held about 26 meetings over the summer, preparing for this school year with Bright Futures. One new thing that you'll see, that I think Lisa handed out, is that we did do some little flyers and something that we could pass out that explained a little bit more to the public what Bright Futures is about. It's obviously, you know, first and foremost about meeting the basic needs of the students, and we use Facebook for that. And we've encouraged people to go like the Bright Futures Beaufort County Facebook page, and that has continued to grow. And we've been able to meet those needs pretty quickly through the Facebook and the social media route. We've also set up an email distribution route as well, and that seems to help. We're, one of the main things that we wanted to do, and this has come from Bright Futures USA, we're obviously affiliate of that, is setting up site councils in each school, because each school is so unique and different, and as we get to know the leadership in each school, we realize how different they all are. So each, we've got right now eight site councils set up, up and running with meetings, meeting regularly, we've got, well, six are up and running regularly, we've got two that are gonna be meeting in the next two weeks, and they'll be up and running after that. And so they're getting going in their schools, and Robin's gonna talk about some exciting things that are happening at the site council level. So there's two basic ways that we've split this program. First is the basic needs of the students that we get from Nicole Howard when she sends us those. And so we're making sure that we get those specific needs from her, and we fill those using the community resources that we already have. But the second piece is the site councils, and that we're very excited that they've gotten established in each school. And so that's where most of the work is gonna be done, to change each school and to make those partnerships, faith-based and business partnerships happen. So Robin's gonna talk about some of the great things that have happened since we've started those site councils. Well, obviously, hopefully, by the end of the year, have the rest of the site councils up and running. Honestly, all of the staff members at all the school have given us people for the site councils, it's just finding those business partnerships and those faith-based partnerships to come in, because we can't go to every single site council, there's only, well, three of us at the chamber, but making sure that we have the board members and other people going to those site councils is very important. So she's gonna talk about the great thing that's, great things that have been accomplished through those site councils, some really success stories already, and when we come to see you again, I'm sure there'll be some more success stories. It's been a great program so far. And then at the end, if you have any questions for us, we can answer those as well.
So I'm just gonna hit a few highlights about the site councils, and like Catherine said, every site council is unique. Chaco Winnity Middle School, Union Chapel Freewill Baptist is one of their partners, and they don't have the Backpack Buddy program there, so Union Chapel has started the Backpack program there. We have partnered, Bright Futures has partnered with United Way, Dr. Phillips has worked with Sally Love, and through that program, we are getting tutors into some of the middle schools. They are already getting into Chaco Winnity Middle, they are going to Northeast Elementary, and we think we're getting them into P.S. Jones as well. At Eastern Elementary, we had at the pre-K open house, Bardot Studio, a hair salon downtown, wanted to give free back-to-school haircuts. So we realized we were gonna have so many, we called the Beaufort County Community College, and they brought their cosmetology department, but only the instructors could give free haircuts. So the Bardot Studio, Katie Paul, and two of the instructors gave back-to-school haircuts. So there were three people, so 30 students received free haircuts, and also members of Badant Beaufort Hospital and Christ Church were there, and they interacted with the children while they were there, played games, and read books, so that was really a cool event. At Washington High School, First South is one of their big partners, we have a food and hygiene closet up and running. We do not have Backpack, the Backpack program at Washington High School, but we set up a closet so kids can go in that closet if they need things. The guidance counselors identify the students so they can go in that closet. We've also established a social media awareness program, that was part of the freshman orientation for parents and students. First South Bank is bringing in Tracy Tooten, and she's not only, they're not only bringing her into Washington High School, but they're bringing her into Southside and Northside, and she's an expert in the field, Dr. Tracy Tooten from East Carolina, she travels all over the world, so that's awesome. And also Greg Coltrane with Tri-County is helping out with that program as well. At the Ed Tech, we've had that site council going for a while. First Baptist Church is acting as their PTA, they've never had a PTA at their school, so they did, First Baptist Church did a back-to-school breakfast for the teachers there, which was very appreciated. We also had Kona Ice, Jerks Chiropractors partnered with Kona Ice to go out there and provide a cone of ice for all the students and staff, and they love that. Snowden has over eight church partnerships, and that has just been, Barb Jones is our Bright Futures board member, and she is just, she's a retired teacher, and she is just unbelievable. So we have eight church partnerships, some of the things going on down there, they help with the back-to-school breakfast, they help teachers get the classrooms ready, they provided school supplies, they now have a volunteer, volunteer coordinator, so they're getting more people in to read and tutor with the children. They're also working on a Hall of Fame for graduates of Snowden, which is really cool. Northeast Elementary had their first site council meeting this past week. They had, one of their main goals is to get, just reach out into the community, they want to gain that sense of community spirit back. Greg Coltrane is our board member there, he's with Tri-County. They had over 27 people at that site council. They are very, very excited about what this can do, and it's just, we're very excited. And to close, this just kinda wraps up in my mind what Bright Futures is. Catherine films every other week a chamber show called News and Views, which airs in Beaufort County and in the Tri-County area. And Paige Harris, who's the chairman of our board, and I went on the program to talk about Bright Futures. Someone was flipping through the channels and actually watched the show, and we were talking about Bright Futures, and someone, someone watched it, and so they went and logged on to Facebook and saw that we had posted a need for a washing machine that Jeremiah Jackson needed, they needed a washing machine at the Ed Tech. This girl, this woman had a washing machine just sitting in her garage that was not being used, so she called me, called me at the chamber, and she said, "I would love to donate this washing machine." So as soon as the weather clears up, we are getting that washing machine to the Ed Tech. And to me, that is, through the chamber, through the school system, through Bright Futures, it has all come together. And to me, that is what Bright Futures is all about. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Robin, you just, if you wanna be a partner, you just call you guys, and you will hook us up?
Absolutely. And that's what, we have a few schools left to go, and that's the issue, we are, we want to get site councils at every, every school going, and there's some schools, like Chaco Winnity Middle, they only have one church, they only have one partner, which is Union Chapel Freewill Baptist, but they are, they are ready to go. P.S. Jones, we have our first meeting on Monday, they only have one partner, Washington Assembly of God. Some, some schools have multiple partners, but some just have one, and, you know, it doesn't matter.
What about Northeast?
Northeast, I don't, they have Tri-County, we went down to visit with Badant, let's see, Badant-Bellhaven Family Practice, they're a part of it, and they are, they are raring to go. They are, I think, I think Northeast is gonna end up having a lot of partners. So, and a partner can look, a partner can do something once a year for the school, they can do something once a week for the school, a partnership can look different in every way. And they have lots, they already have lots of church partners, Northeast does, so a partnership can look any different way. And I'm gonna leave some of these cards, if y'all want to take some home with you, my email address is on here, so someone can call me or email me.
Thank you very much. And now I believe Dr. Phillips is gonna give us an update on driver's ed.
Yeah, I just wanna let you all know that as we waited for the dust to settle on the budget, to get an idea of exactly where we are, moving forward on driver's education, we basically went back to last year's funding approach, and we are able, we are gonna continue to charge families $45, and the state money that we draw down should cover the cost of the program, so we will, we actually started back this past Tuesday with the first class being offered again. We were driving the students, as you all recall, that had gone through the program, so we took about a 10-day, two-week hiatus to wait for things to settle down, and we're back at it now with, under the same basic operation protocol that we used last year. And then we don't know what next year's gonna hold, we've been told that it'll be covered by the state, but we're not exactly sure which funding source that is. So as we start to work on next year's budget, we'll also try to get some clarity about that funding source and be coming back to you with more detail, but we wanted to know that we're back up and running again, and back in the saddle as of, as of this past Tuesday.
So it was a pretty short suspension of services, I guess, so.
But that needed to be done, because we didn't know how long the funding was.
I agree. We were kind of in the dark on that, so now things are back, so.
And we're grateful that the families don't have to shoulder that cost, we hope they don't in the future as well.
Absolutely. Okay, let's move into our action items, and Stan, I believe you're up first with some capital items. Do you know what I'm looking at on my screen, or do I need to explain to these folks? Give me, what they're looking at? Go ahead. I was just saying, you've, you've got some handout or something, but we've got it on our screen, I wanna make sure everybody understood.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, let me, let me just do it anyway. If, if you see all the attachments you have...
And they have lots, they already have lots of church partners, Northeast does. So a partnership can look any different way. And I'm going to leave some of these cards if y'all want to take some home with you. My email address is on here so someone can call me or email me.
Thank you very much.
And now I believe Dr. Phillips is going to give us an update on Drivers Ed.
Yeah, I want to let you all know that as we waited for the dust to settle on the budget to get an idea of exactly where we are, moving forward on driver's education, we basically went back to last year's funding approach and we are able, we are going to continue to charge families $45 and the state money that we draw down should cover the cost of the program. So we will, we actually started back this past Tuesday with the first class being offered again. We were driving the students, as you all recall, that had gone through the program. So we took about a 10-day, two-week hiatus to wait for things to settle down and we're back at it now with, under the same basic operation protocol that we used last year. And then we don't know what next year is going to hold. We've been told that it'll be covered by the state, but we're not exactly sure which funding source that is. So as we start to work on next year's budget, we'll also try to get some clarity about that funding source and be coming back to you with more detail. But we wanted to know that we're back up and running again and back in the saddle as of, as of this past Tuesday.
So it was a pretty short suspension of services, I guess, so.
But that needed to be done because we didn't know how long the funding was.
I agree. We were counting to dark on that, so now things are back, so.
And we're grateful that the families don't have to shoulder that cost. We hope they don't in the future as well.
Absolutely. Okay, let's move into our action items and Stan, I believe you're up first with some capital items. Do you know what I'm looking at on my screen or do I need to explain to these folks?
Yes, sir.
What they're looking at? Go ahead. I was just saying, you've, you've got some handout or something, but we've got it on our screen. I want to make sure everybody understood.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, let me, let me just do it anyway. If you see all the attachments you have, the first one says capital projects will approve. If you'll click on that one, it is a format where it shows all the projects listed on one and the bids and what, the one that's highlighted in yellow is the one that's low bid or at least the one that Stan would be recommending that we go with. All the other attachments are the actual contract, or not contract, the actual bids.
Actual quotes.
Quotes for each one of these projects if you wanted to look through those. But this one pager would keep you from having to go through each individual ones, but you get to see the companies that bid. Plus, we can have, after Stan gets to explaining this, I've been told we can approve all of these at one time, okay? Which would save us some time because tonight, there's what, eight or nine?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I won't take any more of your thunder.
Okay. First one that is up is the Bath Elementary School, Highway 92 fence project. This project actually was approved by y'all previously for this bath upgrade. And during that time, an elderly customer back in the far corner of the fence and damaged it pretty bad in that corner, for the corner post. And then the rest of the fence was very rusty and very, and disrepaired, full of vines. Someone at Bath, and I never found out who, acquired a grant and they purchased the materials. Materials were on site. So then we went back and just bid out the installation of the donated materials from Lowe's. When she wrote the specs, she didn't include no post, she didn't include no tie wires and she didn't include no bottom wire. She just specs, they got poles and fence. So we had to go out and spec and I actually wrote the specs on how many poles and how many, you'll see it written out in detail, very detailed, so we'd get bid for bid. And that's what Clark and Son come in, it total project, we added the two together, projects came in at $7,309. And we had $8,800 allotted for that capital project.
That's what I was going to ask you, so thanks for throwing that in there.
Yes, sir. I wrote them in front of all my folders.
Yep, okay, thanks, Stan.
Okay. The next one up is Walk Behind Scrubber. That's a piece of equipment that will probably go into Chaco Wendy Middle Schools where I think I'm going to send it. We're looking, trying to get the hours. Actually, we'll be doing that tomorrow if it's approved to purchase. This piece of equipment is used at the school to actually scrub the floor, walk behind it and it does the, the hard work instead of doing an independent swinging machine. It's a self-propelled machine. This item was on state contract and for $6,666 plus tax. Any questions about that?
Was this an item that was listed as a capital?
Yes, sir. Capital item. Scrubber.
Sure. Just for the public, particularly for those that watch on television, these are not new items. These are items that were on our adopted capital budget. And what we've done is we wanted the public to see, certainly the board to see, what the bids were. And then we're, we're going through the process now of actually awarding that bid to get the job done. But this is not new money for new projects. This is actual, what was adopted when we met with the commissioners back last spring with regard to our capital budget. So these are items.
For 15, 16 years. Next one is Eastern Elementary School, Pod 5 roof replacement. Low bid was Curtis Roofing at $34,200 plus tax. This was the roof that was slated to. Pod 4 is at Eastern and it is exact same low bidder was Curtis Roofing of $33,800 plus tax.
Do you mean what we had listed on the capital for those items, those two?
$34,076 for Pod 4. Pod 5 was $50,000.
Is there a difference between Curtis and Curtis and Curtis Construction?
Yes, ma'am. Curtis, used to own Curtis and Curtis and they broke apart and went several years and he decided to get back in the roofing business. So Curtis.
Totally different.
Is an original owner of Curtis and Curtis, from what I understand, just in my, in my background checking.
And where are they out of?
Kinston.
That seems like an enormous difference in bids, right?
Did you get any local bids?
Nobody's certified to do the installation of the roof in Beaufort County. All residential, not commercial. We don't, I have a commercial installer. Empire Roofing here has done the roof, but he has to do it under somebody else's license and he can't give us our warranty. He knows how to do it. David Lewis. EdTech replacing the HVAC on the Media Center Library, whatever we want to call that building. We call it the Media Center. It's the oldest air conditioning in the system. 1978 or '79 unit. We had allotted.
I should have just brought my sheet.
It was on the non-barred unit.
Yeah, it was a group air conditioning, that's right. That's why I didn't have a general one. It's a group, we grouped it together on our capital fund. This next one is the same way. It's air conditioning units in North, North Side High School Administrative Area. There's two units there that are standalone units, separate from the chiller and stuff. But these units will be added to our automation system where we can control them from our building management system. And that was, low bid was Robertson Heating and Air here of Washington of $17,900 plus tax and that's for both units. And that true comes out of the non-barred, non-barred total of HVAC replacement of $79,900. The next one is John Cotton Taylor re-roof.
Go back, Stan, you said 17,9, that's for the EdTech, not for the.
Okay, excuse me? Let me correct.
$250.
North Side, $8,250 plus tax.
That's, that's not Robertson, that's Air Serv.
Air Serv and they're of Washington too. I got off the wrong line.
They're from Washington?
Yes, ma'am. Any more questions about that? John Cotton Taylor Elementary School, replacing the main roof, we call it. You'll see some of the bids says the east roof and it's not Eastern Elementary, so it was confusing earlier. Somebody asked questions about that, but it's the east roof, the main roof. And the low bid was Curtis and Curtis of $5,932 plus tax.
That's down one from where we're at. We got the, we got the connector roof first.
Connecting and then the main.
Okay, I'm sorry. Y'all have another one?
Yeah. I can tell the main one, I guess, because it's $50,000.
Yes, okay. Mine's different.
Did we have a number on that?
That's connect, that's the connecting, that's the little roof in between. The main building is $52,240 and again, that is Curtis and Curtis. And then the other two are items that we've, the last two are items that were actually presented last month and there was not a true clarification of the actual money that was noted. And the board agreed for the base bid of $444,000 plus alternate seven, which was a metal roof of $27,000, would bring the bid to $471,000 and that would be awarded to Stocks and Taylor of Washington.
And what we had was $4,000 less than that.
That's correct.
So this is just to correct that $4,000?
Yes, sir. This is nothing, you're right, just making sure it is. This next one is P.S. Jones contract and this is actually coming back because, because of the architectures, architects typing boo-boo. He made a $500 boo-boo and to add up the deducts, if you actually look at the document and add it all together, it comes to $10,568. And that's what y'all approved, me to meet with them to find out value engineering and what we could do in-house. And if you take that from the $89,400, brings the total to $78,332.
You can't say $500.
It was $500, it was a $500 in our favor, but it's actually back for the right contract. We don't, the math didn't work out in a $500 increment, but it was just a typo, we think, so.
But it's just come for us with the $500?
Yes, right.
I mean, we've already taken.
And we're still underbid.
Right, that's right.
Stan, you might have said, but I was trying to add some. On the John Cotton Taylor, on the $52,000, what, what did we have that in the budget?
55, 55.
Well, by the time you add tax, that's probably pretty close to it.
It's going to be pretty close. That's why we put the plus tax in case there is a little difference there that we won't have to come back again.
Yeah, no need to come back for us for the tax.
Stan, let me ask you.
Yes, ma'am.
And maybe I'm, I'm just missing something here. This, this John Cotton Taylor roofing, re-roofing, why are there being, these are new schools, right?
John Cotton Taylor?
John Cotton Taylor.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, got you. Got you, okay, okay. I got you.
Not John Small.
Yeah, not John Small.
It's a flat, it's a flat rubber roof and it's a black roof.
We wish it was a new school, I would say.
And we're getting the higher valued, you know, insulation out of it. It's a whole upgrade to meet the new energy standards and codes of roofing, so.
Okay, I was.
Yes, ma'am, wrong answer.
Names there, okay.
Makes a big difference. Any other questions on any of these projects?
This isn't any, I told her I wasn't.
I mean, you know, the ones that all grouped together on HVCs and things like that, there's no way for me to put a figure to it. But I mean, there was still $20,000 worth of underbidings in here that I saw, so.
Yes, sir.
Under what was allotted is what I mean. But.
There is a tremendous difference between Curtis and Curtis and Curtis. On all three, what's?
Astonishing.
Somebody smoking something. I mean, have you looked at these bids? Make sure they're apples for apples.
They're apples for apples, things for things, but he just, I asked him the same thing and he says the difference was in his cost of takeoff, disposal. He didn't have a place to dispose of it and he had to pay disposal fees. He couldn't explain a lot of difference. Well, I said, "There's a drastic difference." I didn't tell him, expose no number, but I just said, "You're greatly, greatly above everybody else."
And you said they're not the same, but did you say?
They're not the same, sir.
Do they know each other, the same family or something?
No, an independent person called Curtis and Curtis. They kept the name, but Curtis is the original owner.
Got you.
And his, his line was?
And Curtis is a whole lot smaller operation. Curtis is like a six or seven man operation where Curtis and Curtis is a big, big company. They have multiple, multiple companies.
And his explanation was that he had to get a more expense?
He had more expense, more overhead. He brought his crews out of Raleigh and his, those guys' crews are out of Kinston, so he didn't have to pay for them. He didn't have to pay housing, travel.
Looking at his proposal, just, I'm just looking at one of them, he does have a very more, quite a bit more detailed proposal. And you're sure that, you're sure that Curtis is providing the same thing that he's quoted?
Yes, sir. We actually wrote the spec and I can bring it back to you, but we, my roofer, David Brown, we actually wrote the specs so we would get apples for apples because of the detail in this year's, having to explain it all, so making sure we're getting.
The Curtis one don't say anything about insulation, anything about flashing, it just says?
Well, the new energy, they had to bring it to the new energy code, so the other guy has written out the energy code, basically written out what's required and the other guy is just saying he will bring it to the energy standards.
As long as you're good with it.
Yes, sir.
Any other requirements on the bid were? Any other questions? Okay.
So when did you approve all of these at one time?
I have been told we can do that for the sake, since they're all on one sheet here. We can just take a motion and approve them all if that's what you decide to do. Okay, any other questions for the vote? Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve all the projects and anyone, everyone in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Stan. And this kind of cleans up some, I'll let everybody know too, it kind of cleans up some stuff, brings us up. So as future meetings, you probably won't see this many together. This is a one-time deal. But the format's great. That way it gives us everything we need and I appreciate it.
Yeah, the only thing that I would, that you could possibly approve upon is put somewhere in there what we budgeted.
Yep. Okay.
That way we know if we're above or not.
We can add another column.
Just so you don't have to tell us or so you don't have to. If you put that in.
Our other spreadsheet, when I give my capital update, we have it on it, so we can, we can transfer to this.
And I, and I'll just, since you mentioned that, I was asked about that, about giving us a capital update tonight, but since I saw this many projects, I asked him just, or I suggested just come back at the end of the month at our next meeting and we'll go over the capital. So we won't be here all night going over Stan's stuff and I'm sure he appreciates that. So next time we come together, we'll do a.
Right, next meeting will be the regular capital.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we now go to voting delegates and Don is going to handle this.
This is for the North Carolina School Board Association's annual meeting that we have in November in Greensboro. We have, given the, given the budget is the way that they determine how many voting delegates you have. We have up to four delegates. We certainly would like to have four individuals that are going to be there for the annual conference to serve as delegates and, you know, do the things that delegates do at the conference. But we need to have those individuals identified and the board vote on those tonight. So I'd like to see if anyone's interested and then see if the chair is willing to take action to make this official.
I will represent you.
Does everybody understand when you say what they need to do, what they need to do, what that is?
You'll go through and see the, the proposal of the agenda items that are there in terms of issues or bylaws being changed or whatever the work is, to hear those types of things. There'll be some discussion that may change wording and then you'll either vote those up or down. And it's, it's a part of having your fingerprints on the work of the School Board Association for the year moving forward.
Right now, I'm planning on being there.
Well, I was going to say, is that the way to do it? Can we see who's actually going to be there to see if you have four, five, six, how many you have?
Probably in about two weeks. When is the conference?
It's 16, 17, it's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, I think it's around the 16th, 17th and 18th.
I'll be there.
I just wrote your name down, you go be there, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we still, yeah, we need to find out who they are tonight so we can take a vote. So Mac, are you, you're saying you're one?
Yeah.
Okay, we're up to two.
I was down that year.
Yes, okay, I'll be the third one.
I'm going to go Terry.
I'm trying to pick you that out right now, but yes, I'm planning on being there part of the time.
You going to drive?
Yeah, but I'll, I'll be going early, so I won't be able to, not that I don't want you to ride with me, but I don't think I'm going to just make a trip there and back. I got to do something.
Martin, which is riskier, you riding, me or me riding?
Oh, I'm not, I'm, I'm carrying. I'll say.
I'm driving on my own, I ain't going with either one.
Mike, if you want to go, we'll get you there, if you want, if you want to be there.
Well, I enjoy going. I'm, I'm going to try to go. I'm going to. Well, then you go this time, I won't go.
We're not saying you can go, Mike. You can take my place as a delegate if you like.
I don't know, I, I'd rather not, but if there's another fourth one going. Oh, come on.
This is in Greensboro.
Three?
He's in Greensboro.
Yeah, go ahead and put it down, I guess, if we'll be on the fourth goal. You are can ride a dog.
And just so those people looking on camera, Mike's coming, I do know how to drive. But this is, this is a side issue he's talking about, but I do know how to drive. I still drive on my own.
Maybe not safely, Mike, you might be right about that.
Climbing's another thing. We didn't specify. Okay, so that's four, does any, I mean, do we need any alternates or is that where we can stop that?
Well, who are they? Read the numbers.
Ms. Booth, Mac Hodges, myself, Butch Oliver. But if you want to be one, I can make room for you.
I can bail out. I'm good, but I'll let you be the delegate if you want. I don't really want to do it, I'm just saying.
If you just not go, I'll take your place.
Okay.
We, we know we have an honest board member over there.
I mean, I'm new, I, I, it's my first time. Well, you ought to go, you ought to go.
Okay, can we put EC as the alternate and then whoever doesn't show, she can be there?
Okay.
How about that?
Butch is a very tough job. You, you can put me as an alternate.
Okay.
You want to?
That's fine, and then whoever the four shows up, is that okay, Lisa? So back again, and I guess we can take a vote. Ms. Booth, Mac Hodges, myself, Butch, and then alternates EC and Mike, and they may very, very well become a regular voting delegate.
Okay, I make a motion, we accept those names.
Okay.
I'll second it, Butch.
You'll seal the deal.
And we thank you. For those of us that cannot go, we thank all of you who wanted to go.
So we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed these people? Say no. Okay, the deal is sealed. Is that all you needed on that, Don?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Calendar, always a wonderful discussion.
If you'll open this up, we've, and I really want to draw your attention to the very bottom right-hand corner in the month of June, and what we're looking at is the very last day of school. We've got down the last day of school right now for students is, is June the ninth. We've got an early release day. One of the issues that's come up for us is that the, there's a state law that requires us to do all of our high school testing, uh, the majority of the high school testing on the last five days of school. And in the past, we've been allowed to have a waiver. We could work those days a little bit and have some, some room that we could work with. We don't have that waiver possibility right now. That may come available. We have no guarantee of that. We've not been told that it would. So we've got to go ahead and plan right now as if we don't have a waiver. We can't have an early release day on a testing day. And we know we're gonna have to test on that last day of school. This really impacts high school students more than anyone else. We'll have some makeups for middle school and elementary. But what my recommendation would be is to make that a full day rather than an early release day, and we're letting folks know early on. And I think it creates confusion if we did it just for the high school students and in some cases they're high school students that are at home taking care of younger siblings and it just makes it easier to do the same thing across the board. So we would announce that it's, it's not making a, a holiday or a teacher work day, a student day. The students were already coming, they were just gonna leave early. So this will be made a, a full day so that we can get the full complement of testing in, uh, and that would require us to change the calendar, which essentially would add a few hours to our instructional hours. Which, given the weather forecast for next week, we may be looking at hours somewhere along the way too. Um, but this, this needs to be done for testing. There's no way we can avoid it unless a waiver possibility comes up, and if it does, we come back to you with an alternative plan, but that's not available right now.
Are we talking the thirteenth and fourteenth?
The, the ninth of June.
You're just asking us from early release to full day.
That's what I see, okay, all right.
I'll make a motion.
I saw that down there.
Any questions?
I, I, I don't have a question about that. I have a, this is sometimes a little difficult to read when you look at it, cause there's not really a key to follow these color codes. Is there any way at some point in the near future that we can put a key on here because?
I don't know what purple means.
I know, and, and.
Sort of like an acronym key.
Well, when you first, when you first look at it, you think each month is a month unto itself and then you, you start finding some continuity in color. And then you have lavender and then you have dark purple and I just, if, if all of those colors have something in common and they appear to, if we could put a key on there, I think it would help.
From reading the little stuff in the green over there.
Right, and as we get older, that little bitty print's hard to read.
Summer holidays, summer annual lead days, summer teacher work days, early release days, but the public needs to, it needs to be very clear. That's certainly something we'll work on.
Carolyn, there's a zoom button on your computer too that you can zoom in.
I know, but I mean, they, they print this out, they give it out and so, in years past, I've looked at it and thought, is there a key on here and I'm missing it? That's really old school to need a key and, whoops, sorry.
You've got Easter colors in December too. Easter colors.
It looks like a lot of purple and gold to me.
I, I, I'm not objecting to colors, but.
Little Carolina blue in there.
Um, you, you mentioned they print it out and pass it out. Is that the school's responsibility? Cause that was actually a question someone asked me, that this year we didn't give out calendars. Do they normally give out school calendars?
I thought they did, like in the packet.
She does? Okay, well, I had, okay, well, I had some schools say they didn't get a calendar, cause they asked me what to find one, I said, I'm sure it's online. Okay, so I thought maybe we just left it to the school to print them out instead of their staff. Okay. So you want a motion to change that from early release to a full day?
That's right, on June the ninth.
Did I hear one over to my left a second ago?
Move a rule.
Yes, um, Mike made a motion in a second.
Do a second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to change it to a full day. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Um, graduation dates.
Next, this topic is related to some degree to the school calendar piece too. My goal was to try to get graduation on a single Saturday, which will be a lot of work for board members, but we could get everything taken care of in one day. When you look at that calendar, uh, high schools are just not comfortable with the short turnaround time. And the other problem is if we have inclement weather and we have to grab the tenth of June as a, as a makeup day for some reason for calendar, it really pushes it and makes it tight. So what the proposal is, that you'll see in your, on the web, on your computer, would be basically a graduation schedule that looks very similar to what we've done in the past. The only difference here, and I want to highlight it just for the public to know, we have tried to protect Wednesday nights, um, we're meeting oddly enough tonight on a Wednesday night, but we've not scheduled graduations on a Wednesday night. The way that the semester, the second semester in the year ends, the way it falls on a, a Thursday, that we just don't feel like there's enough time to be able to pull together what we need to do for Monday graduation. So Washington has requested they graduate on the fifteenth, which we, which would be a Wednesday, and we're doing that because of the anomaly of the schedule. But the recommendation here will be the, the early college, high school would graduate May the twenty-fourth at seven PM on the campus of the community college in building ten. The Ed Tech Center would be June the eleventh, they, because of the size, they can turn that around, they feel like, and much better than waiting until the eighteenth. We have students out of school for several days. That will be at ten AM on a Saturday morning, building eight on the community college campus where they normally graduate. Northside this year would be first of our traditional high schools on June the fourteenth, uh, in their auditorium at seven PM. Washington, June the fifteenth at Chappie Wagner Stadium at seven thirty. And then Southside on June the sixteenth, that Southside High School Auditorium. So we'd just like to get these approved and we can go ahead and get these distributed for folks to put on announcements and people to begin the planning work that has to be done.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Discussion?
Let's just make sure it's nice and warm on the fifteenth.
Okay.
We will do what we can.
Okay, then I have discussion, not just gonna change anything, but, I mean, is, there's no way to work this any different because we're always like a week having graduation, a week after school's out. And I, I can't believe nobody didn't hear about that this year, cause I heard about it from everybody. We were like having graduation at Southside a week later and people were already, school's out, they're ready to leave after those teacher work days and head out on vacation. There was one particular told me they were ready to head to Florida, but yet they couldn't leave, cause their kids graduating down at Southside, and other schools in the next county to us were already graduated way ahead of us. I mean, there's no way to work that out a week after school's out, having graduation.
I would prefer to do it earlier. It's, it's one of those things where folks will say that we've never done it that way, but everybody else does it that way in terms of making it work. And I'd like for us to take a look at that certainly moving forward, and, um, it's, it's gonna be one of those things that I hope I can bring back to you for the years to come that would, would solve it and get us out a little bit earlier.
I think you need to, cause this is, this is crazy. A week after school's out, still graduating kids.
Well, the concern we've got this year is that the, the state testing runs until the last day of school. So that, if you graduate, if you graduate the week of, the last week, you're gonna have some students that have not finished their end of course tests and things. So you basically have them walking the stage, but they wouldn't be able to get the diploma. Because literally some of the testing that's required cannot be given until the last day of school. If we have that waiver, we can move things a little bit earlier.
That'll affect other counties too.
It will this year, and I'm not sure what other counties are doing.
They're graduating where have us, where have us.
I think part of that was the general assembly action sometime back where they felt like we wrapped up testing early on and then we were just kind of holding students in the classroom. And they want to make sure that we maximize instructional days and push the testing back as far as we could.
Okay, well, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions other than mine?
Uh, I would just say that if it can be revisited between now and graduation, um, of course, I know there's a deadline when they have to order the graduation invitations and all that, but that's still a little ways off, isn't it, would you say?
I mean, it's just hard to explain to parents when you look at the counties right next to us and they've already graduated a week earlier and gone, and we're still sitting here waiting to graduate kids. It just makes us look like we don't know what we're doing. I'm sorry, but that's, that's the way it seems. Okay, we got that motion and that second, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Put me down, no. Just so I can tell those parents I voted against it. Didn't change anything, but at least I can tell them. Field trips?
We have one at seventy-two ninety-one Northside High School, and they've done this in the past. It's a one-day trip to Washington DC, not overnight, but it is a out of state on a charter bus. They've done this in the past. They obviously leave early and come back later, but they've been able to get it done in one day. We're just bringing this back to you for your approval.
That's a lot of, a lot of males, but one, I guess if it's for the day, they can handle it.
That's twenty-five good kids.
What do they do? Just get off the bus and go through and come right back?
They've got a packed agenda and they start from the time they hit the ground until they finish up.
They don't do much. They, they be doing a whole lot, huh?
Get back on the bus.
No. Okay.
Move approval if they want to go.
Okay. We have a motion in a second for approval of trip. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let them go. It's gonna be a nice day.
Yeah.
Uh, personnel, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I approve that we go into closed session pursuant to general statute one four-three dash three one eight dot eleven A one, to prevent disclosure of confidential personnel files under general statute one one five C dash three twenty-one and general statute one one five C dash four oh two. And USC twelve thirty-two G under student records.
Okay, have a motion, I hear a second.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second for closed session. All in favor, say aye.
Right.
Any opposed? We're in closed session. Thank you. Okay, we're coming out of closed session, we're now back in open session.
Got you.
And the first item up is approval of the personnel agenda that was just reviewed. Do I hear a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, personnel agenda is approved. Uh, October calendar, Dr. Phillips, you want to tell us anything about that? I believe it's just a couple of meetings on that.
The fir- first meeting is not at Northside.
They're both here.
It'll be here.
But we have a twelfth and a twenty-sixth.
Right.
Okay.
And then for the public to know too, we've got the ongoing work with our strategic plan. That plan and committee will be meeting on October the sixth. And I'm sure that we'll be doing some other meetings in the communities from that point on, but we've had three community work, uh, or three community group meetings at our high school attendance areas. And they'll be bringing that information in and then there'll be some more outreach to the community as we, as we work on this big project that we've got.
Okay.
Is it any way possible that we could do this October twelfth meeting on the fifth? Do we have enough time to do that?
Hmm, that'd be Monday. I mean, yeah, that'd be Monday.
Do we have enough time to do it, Mr. Chairman?
Well, I guess anything's possible. The only thing is, do we have enough to talk about by Monday?
You got that storm too, you don't know what you're gonna do. Whatever y'all want to do.
It's that whole week out there.
It would help me, I have a dental appointment on the twelfth.
Excuse me?
The fifth would help me, but it's just.
The only problem that I see with that is that we're talking about in two business days having another meeting. And that wouldn't be enough to build a real agenda to make it worthwhile having a meeting.
That's just next week, really.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Well, I mean, it's.
I mean, the day's Wednesday. Since we moved this to Wednesday, that would just move us Thursday and Friday and we'd have a meeting. That wouldn't be enough to really build an agenda for a meeting that quick.
That's true.
Not saying we can't have it, there wouldn't be probably anything to talk about. Wouldn't be a need to have it, is what I'm saying. Right. Yeah, we seem to find things to talk about, don't we?
So we're gonna keep it on twelve?
The only problem is when you do that, you know, it's such a long meeting, I mean, trying, what he was saying was we could just combine the two and.
The nineteenth and the twenty-sixth.
Oh, the nineteenth and the twenty-sixth.
And then when the presentation's.
Well, we could do that. How would that work for everybody? The nineteenth and the twenty-sixth, and that way we're just, we'll have plenty to get together on by then and we're divided up into two meetings. Is everybody okay with that?
So we're moving the twelfth until the.
If everybody wants to do that.
Until the nineteenth at four thirty?
Yeah, it'll still be a work session at four thirty on the nineteenth.
Mr. Chairman, on the twenty-sixth, I will have to be excused early. I've got another commitment that night.
Okay.
And we starting at five?
Well, maybe we can cover most of our stuff on the nineteenth.
Four thirty.
That'd be good.
So let's move the twelfth to the nineteenth then.
Twelfth to nineteenth.
The twenty-sixth is at five thirty?
And the twenty-sixth is at five thirty. The nineteenth's at four thirty.
The nineteenth at four thirty.
Right.
And the twenty-sixth?
Five thirty.
Five thirty.
At five thirty.
And if you need something in the next two weeks, you can call us. Well, actually we have our day meeting Tuesday anyway for some of us, right?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Okay. Uh, any board member updates?
Hey, Mr.? Do you have an afternoon ticket?
Mm-hmm, sure.
I learned that was discussed, we, we had a very hot discussion, um, at the, the board of directors meeting.
Okay.
Number one, for those of us who planning to return to this board in December, the primary has been changed, you know that, or you know that, that it will be on the, uh, it'll be moved to March the fifteenth. The filing date is the first through the twentieth, um, instead of February. Um, the other thing is that, um, it was discussed that the people up on Jones Street is trying hard to do away with all local school boards. So, uh, their problem is that they feel that, uh, they can appoint, uh, a committee that can take care of schools, the low, the school system, that can do better than the local school board that they lead. So we need to keep our eyes and ears open and there are things that we need to do as far as, now to contact our legislators and go constantly send it. The, the, all teachers, as Dr. Phillips has told you, all the teachers will receive a seven hundred and fifty dollar bonus that's being hired by November the first.
That's, that's all state employees.
All state employees, okay. Teachers, okay. Also, the, uh, the school board training that have been set for new trainers, well, every school board member is supposed to have twelve hours of training. Now they changed it to every two years instead of every year, okay? That has been changed. Also, I heard Dr. Phillips speak also on the driver's ed funds that has been returned and they are returning from the fines and tortures. That's, that's how we get that. House Bill three thirty-four, uh, you, if you haven't read that, you need to read that. That House Bill is saying that we must have in place a policy that is anti-nepotism by March first. And that's not only for the system, but for any school board member, any central office administrator and any individual contractor. Okay, and that policy must be in place by March first.
Meaning, excuse me, meaning what? If you a board member, you can have relatives.
Now, what, what it means is that, that that would have to be openly admitted to the public when we make personnel decisions. If we're hiring an individual and there's a nepotism issue, even if they're related to an administrator or whatever that's not sitting on the board, we have to publicly make folks aware of that.
And the policy, it should be a policy.
That's right, it'd be a policy. And the school board association will take care of that with the policy customization service that we provide. We'd have to adopt that, but obviously make sure we're following that.
The biggest issue that was discussed while we were there was that they are saying that, uh, legislators are saying that they are wanting to, any school that's not, any local public school that's not efficient and not working efficiently, not growing. They are trying to merge the school. And the merger, did you hear that, doctors? Okay, am I saying?
They want to create, create what's called an achievement school district, but that, that did not pass prior to their adjourning, so that's not something that's right on the forefront right now, but it is being discussed.
Okay, it's being discussed, okay.
But then also schools that are, are, um, continue to be DNF schools should have a action plan or, or some type of a school improvement plan, and we do that anyway, but there's some things in the state I think they're trying to tighten up. And I think fortunately we do those things already, so we just have to continue on with what we've been doing.
Dr. Phillips basically gets the same information that I get. Uh, you, you might not hear it from him across the board here, but, uh, I'm sure that he has, he just informed me that, um, he had no problem with just making copies so that everybody can receive a copy of it and know exactly what's going on from the legislator down to us. And that's what we really need to be concerned about now because they are working hard. And I, I, I think that our lobbyists is doing a great job at trying to protect us, but it's really, really getting to be a tight issue up there with them because, you know, they, uh, they've never been teachers, but you know, they've never been in the room in the school, but they know what needs to be done. So I guess that's why we feel that they don't belong to the school board, but we need to stand for what we believe is right, and that is that we need protection for our children. Thank you.
No, I, I appreciate you bringing it to our attention and, uh, as your board chairman, I'll promise you, as these local legislators, as they visit our schools and I'm with them, I'll point those issues out to them.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I mean, it's, whenever that is.
And I want to let you know that I, when this, when they, when the bill, when they was working on the bill five thirty-nine, uh, I made several calls to the legislators, the senators and to the house members to ask them to please oppose that bill. And I guess you know that bill was that, that the local schools, the public schools would have to share all of their funds with the charter school, including nutrition, which. So, I mean, we need to, if it's possible, pay attention to these bills so that we'll know, uh, what we need to fight for and how we need to stand for what we believe in.
I absolutely agree with you there. Any superintendent updates?
Yeah, two things. One, I want to share with you and the public that Chuck Windy Primary School was named this week as a national blue ribbon school, uh, one of three in North Carolina. And I think it's interesting that that school on this report card is a B when they're recognized as one of the three top performing schools in North Carolina with that recognition, but we're proud of the work that they do there. And then the last item is something that we might, I, I don't know if it's something we need to look at in terms of adjustment, in terms of action, but given the latest, given the level of state funding that we have for teacher assistance and based on the general gesture the county commissioners provided. And I think some understanding in terms of where we were gonna be at in funding, there was a dollar figure of three. in terms of where we were gonna be at in funding, there was a dollar figure of $315,000 that we've talked about, that the commissioners had agreed to share with us. I think the feeling is because of the funding being restored to the level that it was last year for the 14, 15 level, that the recommendation would be that the commissioners would not transfer the funds. We haven't gotten it yet. I think there's some folks in the community that even use the word renig, the school boards renigging on the agreement that we had with the commissioners, and we've not done that. We were trying to figure out, it took us until two Fridays to get to determine what the allocation formula looks like, and to the best of what we can tell, we are exactly where we were in 2014, 15, minus $12,000 on the teacher assistance side. We've gained some in some places, we've lost some in others, and we'll give you kind of a scorecard of that, but the money has not been transferred in a lump sum, and what I